All right. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the work session for the city council for the city of Wildwood Monday, March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Ms. Elders, would you please call the room?
Mayor Boland.
Here.
Councilmember Galani. Councilmember Hopper. Councilmember Jaxi.
Here.
Councilmember Bertolino. Councilmember Dodwell. Councilmember Ottenberg. Councilmember Edens. Councilmember Bros.
Here.
Councilmember Garrettano. Councilmember Flasher.
Here.
Councilmember Rambo.
Here.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Nian.
Here.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Here.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
All right. Welcome. Good to see all of you. So we have ten items under work session. Before we get to action items, is there anything under for information items that any member of the council wants to discuss? All right. Councilmember McCutcheon.
I just have a question about the internet rollout. Are we going to be able to see the plan before this goes to the public? Do we have any idea when?
We are meeting with them the week of the twenty eighth. Right now. He's working on it. Okay, well, he's working on it. We are right now tentatively planning to meet with Spectrum the week of the twenty eighth to go over the primary plan, design plan.
And then are we gonna go over it in a work session? Are we gonna have a meeting prior to that so we can make sure we understand what?
Prior.
I think it depends on what it shows.
Right.
I don't think we know enough yet to answer that. My sort of just initial reaction to that is that I would afford it to the council and then depending on the wishes of the council, we could discuss it at a work session or not.
Okay.
Whatever we all wanted to do. Okay, Councilmember Clark.
Concerning the Birch Forest Drive turnaround, is there a scope? Have we expanded the scope? And if so, is there an overrun of our budget? Are we still under budget with that?
Birch Forest turnaround, would that be Rick Brown, Joe, then it's Jim, Mr. Vinnich?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Clark, we still are under budget. We have a signed contract with the contractor and it's approximately seventy-five thousand dollars. We do have some additional expenses for landscaping, but we'll stay well under the hundred thousand dollars that was budgeted for two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Thank you. Anything further? All right, moving to action items, Mr. Vinnich, Urban Night Sky Place Designation for the Community Park.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, and I do want to acknowledge the work that Ms. Ripeto did on this particular subject as well as the Planning and Parks Committee. Back in two thousand and twenty-one, the department was contacted by a representative of the urban, excuse me, the International Dark Sky Association. The contact related to community park, the individual was hoping that the city would consider designating it, or at least considering its designation as an urban night sky place. The individual represented that the city of Olivet, Stacy Park, had just completed this process and was one of five across the country that now had that designation as an urban night sky place. The Planning and Parks Committee was presented this request and over the course of a couple of meetings, spent a great deal of time trying to understand what the benefits were and the costs, as well as if there was any interest in actually becoming not only for our parks an urban night sky place, but an international dark sky community. Ultimately, that latter point was rejected and the committee thought it would not be appropriate. However, after discussing the pluses and minuses, the committee did recommend that the city proceed forward with an application process to the International Dark Sky Association for Community Park as well as Bluffview Park. The application can include multiple locations and the feeling was that Bluffview Park in the end may be the best location given its dark sky that exists already. However, in both instances, the city has outdoor lighting requirements. They are applied vigorously on city projects. And for the most part, the cost is two hundred and fifty dollars and time for the staff, the team members here at City Hall to make the application and follow through the process. The process can be lengthy though, up to three years, one to three years. But hopefully we'll find it to be something that we can depend on the city of Olivet for assistance, which they've offered, as well as local representatives of the International Dark Sky Association. So tonight, the committee has recommended authorization for the department to proceed with the application for the two park sites. And hopefully we'll know in some timeframe, a reasonable timeframe, if we've been successful or not. Thank you.
So Joe, in a nutshell, like in one sentence for the benefit of the public, the advantage to the city and its residents in doing this is what?
The advantage is it provides an example of appropriate lighting. It offers new programming that's based upon dark sky astronomy. And ultimately, it indicates that the community is far thinking in terms of maintaining dark sky, which is a key element of the city of Wildwood and its rural areas.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Clark?
First, I'd like to thank Mr. Vinnich and Ms. Ripeto, especially for all of her work she did on putting together that presentation that she had given to us. I would, based on what we've heard, I would move that we pursue the certification of the the park that the department deems the most appropriate as an urban night sky designation by submitting a formal application to be reviewed and hopefully approved by the five oh one C three nonprofit organization that's called International Dark Sky Association. As well as maybe looking into making sure that there's not too high of a cost with policing that area during this nighttime, night sky time that we have the park open.
Okay, so we have a motion to proceed with the recommendation from the committee and it's seconded by Councilmember Bartoni. For the public's information as well as the council, so the agenda only refers to the community park and Ward One. This motion, I believe I heard you say is for the community park and Bluffview, Bluffview being in Ward Six. So we have two wards implicated here. The report actually refers that is attached to the agenda refers to both, but the agenda only refers to community park and Ward One. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. See Administrator Cross, did you want to say something?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I wanted to respond to Councilmember Clark with regards to the policing of the parks during these activities. And we did have a conversation with Captain Mundell to find out how that would be done, given the current staffing, and he assured us that the patrol officers would be swinging by there maybe and if need be, if there was, if there's a big event, you know, the science center comes and so forth, they might bring on a new, another officer for that evening. But for the most part, if it's just people going to look at the sky and it's not a big event, this, it would just be covered under the normal policing that he has.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Bros.
Yeah, I guess in reading it, it looks like if we're approved, there could be other costs associated to bring parks to a, I guess, meet an acceptable level. Is there an idea as to what that cost would be to to get there and then as well as to maybe annually maintain it?
Mr. Vinnich?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bros, in regards to Bluffview Park, there will be no cost because there is no lighting associated with that park facility. So we'll focus on community park. And I'm sure, as you know, when community park was designed and engineered, we engaged a lighting consultant to ensure that any lighting that was installed would be fully shielded. We would use appropriate LEDs in that they would have the the range of temperatures that are necessary. So I feel confident that we'll not have to do many changes, if any, and those will be just the light bulbs themselves, not the fixtures. Because again, they are all fully shielded at this time. In terms of maintenance with LEDs, once you put them in, it's not to say they never burn out, but it is certainly a low cost component of overall park maintenance. Thank you.
Councilwoman Flasher? I was one of the ones that voted against this at Parks and Planning. And Joe, did you say that it's three years to kind of get this all through?
Yes, the research Ms. Ripeto undertook indicated the application process could be as quick as one year or up to three years. And again, I would be surprised if it took three years, given the limited lighting that is associated with community park. Again, most of our lighting is in the parking area by the pavilion and the pavilion area itself.
Okay, I'm one of these guys that lives in Wildwood that's not a big nature guy. Sorry, I'm just not. And the idea that we're spending staff time on something that to me, and once again, I'm not a big nature guy, but to me isn't like changing the life of Wildwood in any way, shape or form seems a little silly. That's my own opinion. I think that this is great for the people that are real nature people. I'm sure you love it. But I just, I just, that's my thoughts on this whole thing. I just seems like a lot of staff time for something that is a way to go, a little thumbs up on you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rambo?
Yeah, real quickly, the first two calls, literally, my first two emails actually from constituents when I joined council were both concerning night sky compliance. One couple had moved here from Arizona, for example, and missed the stars. And so there is some support in the community for that. The events that I've seen in Forest Park and other, you know, elsewhere have been very well attended. It's a couple of evenings, you know, say, once a quarter or something like that, a bunch of star fans get together with their kids and stuff. It's a sort of a, it's a wonderful event for families. And I think the cost is, the application cost is nil. Ms. Ripeto's efforts shouldn't be discounted, but it's a couple of hours a month for maybe a year, and she seemed fine with that. And so I supported it then, I support it now. Not only for the, for the benefits to, you know, family life and so forth, but also to the benefits, for the benefits to wildlife. So that's my view.
Councilwoman McCutcheon?
Yeah, I have concerns about this as well. Wildwood is aware of night skies and we've had a lot of discussions about lighting and how that impacts our night skies and our quality of life. But I too am concerned about this may end up costing more than it appears to up at the front, and I'm also concerned about staff. I know there's a lot on staff's plate, and I hate to add one more thing and several more events to their plate.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion on the floor to proceed. Councilmember Bartoni?
Thank you. I think we had a discussion at the P and P meeting about the staff time, if I remember right. So, Joe, I don't want to speak for you, but if you want to kind of like just explain, from what I understand, you said it wasn't going to be a lot of time and you were okay with it. But I'll let you speak for yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Bartoni, and with the permission of the mayor. I think when Ms. Ripeto and I discussed it, we were estimating about maybe two to three hours a month while we're in the application process. And then certainly, if we do hold one or two events per year, per the requirements of the certification, then those will be events where we maybe are here for four or five hours beyond the typical day. But again, it was all within the realm of what we thought was reasonable. And although a feather in one's cap may not be important to some, it continues just to show that Wildwood's a place that cares about its environment and will do whatever it can to promote others to consider it the same. Thank you.
And if I may follow up, if I remember right, I think we compared this a little bit to like the city of Wildwood being designated a tree city, or if I remember right, so it's not that it's going to change, necessarily change anybody's life or lifestyle, but it's just a, it is a nice designation for the city.
All right, see, Councilman Rottenberg?
I would suggest that we also go ahead and approve this motion simply because I think the dark sky concept would help reinforce the overall thrust that Wildwood has protecting the rural nature of the city, rural character of the city. Sort of tagging on to what Councilmember Bartoni mentioned earlier. Thank you.
All right, so no further discussion now. All in favor of the motion received, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Raise of hands to those, for those opposed, please. We have two opposed, Councilwoman McCutcheon and Councilwoman Flasher. Right, so, Joe, is there going to be any, does this require any legislation or resolution, or is this, it's just done with this motion?
Mr. Mayor, I believe it's done with this motion and we'll begin the application process.
Okay, sounds good. Right, next, Mr. Vinnich, the Community Outreach Task Force.
Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and members of city council, the Community Outreach Task Force was formed in the latter part of two thousand and twenty, and it was in response to conversations held by the city council relating to what's available to our residents in terms of services from organization agencies, and then expanded by the task force to include volunteer opportunities as well. That group of volunteers met for approximately a year and a half, and during that year and a half period, they were led by Councilmember Flasher and then a citizen volunteer as co-chair, Mara Cadwell. At the conclusion of the process, the task force adopted the document that's attached to the memorandum from the task force members. That document identifies organizations that cover a range of services and opportunities. And the feeling amongst the task force members is that if a Wildwood resident is in need of a service, an opportunity, or whatever the situation may be, this list is fairly comprehensive and will direct them to the right person or the right organization. The task force adopted the list, the document as presented tonight. And there is one outstanding issue. Three of the volunteers, one being Mr. Flasher, agreed to update the document, but the issue of where the document might be hosted was not finalized. And so tonight, that is a discussion point, but as mentioned, the document is in final form, has been acted upon by the task force and is being presented to city council tonight for its action. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe, and I'd like to take the opportunity on behalf of all of us to thank the several members of this task force for their work over the past many months. Councilmember Flasher, is there anything you would like to say relative to this item?
This task force ended up being something different than I think what a lot of us thought it was, but it actually was really interesting and fun to learn about the different organizations in our city. We had a meeting where we allowed them to present to us if they wanted to. And to me, that was the real highlight of the, of the task force in general, just kind of learning about some of the things I didn't even realize were in our community. And that's the whole point now, is to kind of get the word out to other people so that they know what's in their own backyard, more or less. So yeah, it was, it was a privilege to be a part of this, and I, like you said, I'm thankful for all the people that were a part of it.
And thank you in particular for your work on it. We all appreciate it. Okay, any action required in regard to this item, Mr. Vinnich?
And minus the hosting issue, I would respectfully request on behalf of the task force that the city council endorse the list as presented tonight.
Okay. I guess we'll do that by motion. Councilmember Flasher? Okay, we have a motion to endorse the list as presented. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Dodwell. I have a question. So is this a fluid list, or how would it be changed, I guess?
It was said that myself and two of the other members would kind of stay on top of this and keep it updated as time goes on.
And the reason I'm asking that isn't so much because I'm concerned about how we do it, as much as in the motion, we need to include that, otherwise it would be construed as a list that isn't changeable. So if there's no objection by any member of the council, we will, how about we do this for longevity, if you're good with it? We will, in the near term, have Councilmember Flasher and his designees leave it kind of open-ended to assist with this. And if at some point, God forbid, you were no longer around, we would ask the city administrator to make a recommendation to the council for a replacement. Is that good with everyone? Councilmember Dodwell?
I was gonna recommend that we might change that up just a little bit. And rather than have city staff do it, that after we get this onboard for a little bit, we put out a call for a volunteer or two that can be responsible for reviewing it every six months to make sure it's accurate. And if they identify any additional entities that have come into the city that we want to add to it, then that can be brought to a council work session and we can make a quick determination based on information gathered by that individual. I just think we should be using some of our volunteers for things such as this. And if you're concerned about final review of it, then that volunteer can look at the list, put together a list of recommendations that they have for additions or subtractions, and then bring it back to the council as a whole, or admin and public works, or whatever group you would like.
So what if we did a hybrid and we left the lead as a council member, Councilwoman Flasher is, is successor, so to speak, and volunteers that they might recommend that would be approved, be recommended by me to the council and approved. I get a little nervous with the council and me not having any ability to examine who someone might be that gets in the mix on something as important as this. So would you be willing to go with that?
That's fine.
Okay, so the, the motion would be that this part of the motion, so it's, the list is approved as is with the ability to change by review of Councilmember Flasher with citizen recommended volunteers to the council and me, and his successor would do the same thing. Okay, you good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, good point. Before we get to you, Councilmember Clark, is everyone good with that? Or did you want to speak on that? Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I think that what Katie said about the six, every six months should be in there because if we just leave it open, it might not ever get done.
Okay, so we would include every six months as, as a stipulation with respect to the review as previously said. Okay, thank you. Is everyone good with that being the motion? Everyone understands the motion. Okay. Excellent. Thanks for all the comments, suggestions. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that passes. And then I thought we might end early tonight, and we got one item left here. And maybe we can discuss some things on the agenda that will, the main meeting agenda that will make that meeting move more, more quickly and efficiently. But the next item on the action item is, we, I've been working with our city administrator and our department heads, and I'm pleased to report that unless you just want to show up for a matter of minutes at the next meeting in March, we would not have much to do. And so I would recommend that the council have its next meeting be the first meeting in April, and I expect the agenda for that meeting would be roughly what you see before you tonight. So if you are in agreement with that, we would need a motion to have that made by Councilmember, I'm sorry. Sure.
We've got two postponements, two bills on our unfinished business plan. Do those need to be executed?
My understanding is that they don't, given the planning we did for tonight's agenda, to be able to present this to you as an option, but Mr., I think both, but let's get that addressed. So I think both of those are from Joe. Yeah, so Mr. Vinnich, you want to answer that, please?
Well, Mr. Mayor, one is related to the Department of Planning and Parks. And given the changes the consultant would like to make to our standard professional services agreement, I believe we'll need the full month. So there is no problem on that particular end. Thank you.
Okay, and then?
The other was for concrete replacement for Rick on the roadways.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Regarding that item on the agenda, I think it would be fine if it is postponed to the next meeting, would being first meeting in April.
Okay, thanks for the question. Councilwoman Rambo?
Yeah, is there, will there be any discussion or approvals or any other actions concerning the internet deployment plan? Because the sixty days is March twenty-first, and I don't want to something lay there for two weeks if we, if there's useful action that we will need to take. That'd be my only concern with, with not meeting.
Okay, City Administrator Cross?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't believe Councilmember Rambo that there would be necessarily action on the part of the council as a whole. I will say this, that my discussions with Spectrum last week with regards to being able to meet with them the week of the twenty-eighth, they did inform me that all of the areas that had been presented to them outside of the initial scope would be included in their initial rollout.
All right, great.
One hundred percent.
Wonderful news.
There will be a cost to that. I don't know what that cost is going to be.
And, and let me just say, not to get down this topic too much because we're getting off agenda item here, off the agenda, but let's just, we, I would suggest we keep in mind, and obviously we don't know what the cost is, and it needs to be reasonable regardless of what I'm getting ready to say. Nevertheless, there are additional unspent federal funds that we could utilize for that.
That is true. So I think, given that, unless there are other areas, and again, if you, if any of you become aware, or the residents become aware, because I have fielded no more than, no less than ten emails and phone calls over the weekend and today, because the Gazette is hitting people's mailboxes and there is an update there, as well as the memorandum that was in the, for information. So people saw that when they looked at the agenda. So I'm getting those phone calls. I've gotten a bunch of phone calls. I don't expect, quite honestly, that, that, I mean, we're going to really tear that apart because they basically are giving us everything that we've asked for up to this point. Now, as I have said all along, this is a living document. So anytime something comes up, if you all are aware of, of another residence that says, well, what about me? Let me know. And I will.
That's for another day.
Okay, so I don't expect any, any action on the part of the council.
Good answer.
Anytime the council makes a decision on its meeting like this, though, just for your information, I consider it to be, and we can make this part of the motion, conditional. If something were to unexpectedly crop up, whether it's internet access or what have you, that we need to meet, then we meet. I'm just saying that we worked pretty hard to get tonight's agenda filled with what needs to be done. And I respect your time and, and our residents' time, and so it can be. And I respect your time and and our residents' time. And so it can be conditionally done if, you know, if you approve it. That's the way I would consider it. So. It needs a motion in a second. Councilmember Ottenberg. So we have a motion to proceed um with meeting next on the first uh first, second Monday in April. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Farmer, need discussion? See no discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, next, um, we have on the work session agenda as our last informational item, discussion of items from the uh that that appear on the main meeting agenda. And I thought to expedite that meeting, we might clear up just a couple of things. So the first one is um this would be for Joe. And by the way, anyone feel free if you have questions on, I'm just gonna go down my list here, and these may be, I suspect several of them are going to be questions that you will inevitably have as well, but feel free to 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 chime in. Um, as we go through these, if you have any questions on the main meeting agenda, Joe, relative to the public hearing items, could you please indicate? So we have um, we have five. Uh, could you please indicate, and I'm gonna explain to the council here in a moment, after you answer why I'm asking you to do this, which of those properties uh definitively we know have um on a definitive basis uh prior or existing environmental issues?
Mr. Mayor, with your permission, of the five properties, all of which are located north of Strecker Road in the vicinity of um Strecker Farms and other subdivisions, two of them are the Bliss Sites. And the Bliss Sites are still listed on the Environmental Protection Agency's National Priorities List. One seventy-three Strecker Road has a part of the Bliss Site that cuts through its northeast corner, as well as an area that was discovered late in the process that has an environmental covenant. So three of the five actually have known contaminants. The other two, one sixty-five and one seventy-seven, are all part of the Strecker Forest Site and had been under a moratorium for many years. And this is the opportunity to address the moratorium by placing the code. Thank you.
Okay, now I'm confused. So first of all, um, we we have addresses that are shown on your your visual, but we have PZ numbers that are shown on the 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 agenda. So to coordinate those two, if we, if you could just let us know, let's just start from the top. PZ ten dash twenty-one is which address?
One forty-nine Strecker Road. So that's the Bliss Property in the Harserina that was infamous with it.
Okay, and I know that this is inevitably buried in all the or contained in in the material that's been provided, but I just want to make it a little easier for the public and everybody. Okay, PZ, the next, PZ thirteen twenty-one, what's the address for that one?
That's one sixty-five Strecker Road. So that's the property in the center of, in the lower center of the slide.
And has it had any known or existing environmental contamination?
There was a log cabin that were, well, there was a home with a log cabin inside. When the logs cabin was to be dismantled, uh, there was dioxin testing and uh the logs had uh dioxin dust on them, which precluded the city from accepting it as a donation. So it is an area of concern.
Okay, next is PZ fourteen dash twenty-one. What's the address for that one?
One seventy-three Strecker Road. That's the larger of the three parcels that farm the Strecker Forest Site. And again, in the northeast corner, uh drainage tributary that goes to the Bliss Property is part of it. And that is the area with the environmental covenant that the City of Wildwood discovered through its ongoing efforts.
Okay, uh, TZ fifteen dash twenty-one, what's the address for that one?
One seventy-seven Strecker Road, sir. And that too is part of the Strecker Forest Site. And again, just an area of concern, as have, I believe, a ground monitoring well associated with it.
So the question I have is, any known or formal and former environmental contamination on that site?
It has not been part of a national priorities list, but again, was part of the overall Strecker Forest Site that led to the white paper that expressed caution about development.
Okay, and then last, PZ seventeen dash twenty-one, so that's gonna be three forty Turnberry Place.
And that is the second of the two Bliss Properties, and that's an area where open dumping occurred into the creek.
Open dumping of what?
Uh, dioxin-laced material, industrial waste.
So what I think I hear you saying then is, in essence, all of the five properties have either directly or indirectly known prior or current contamination. Is that correct?
That is the position I believe the White Paper has provided as well as, and the department supported that, as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission. So yes, sir.
And the reason, just for the benefit of the council, the reason I'm asking this is because at the last um at the last Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, uh, we addressed another five properties. And in that case, three of them definitively did not have any uh known contamination prior or currently. And so the motion that was made, and I actually made the motion, was to subject those two that do, but not to subject the other three. So that was sort of the 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 um the way that it fell. And that was passed, you uh with one exception. Uh, there was one vote against that, but that was passed, and that's gonna be coming to the council next week. So anyway, Councilmember Doddwell.
Based on what you just said, because I was trying to do some research on which properties were included, which weren't, um, maybe the notes are are the um minutes are out for that particular meeting since um I looked on Saturday, but um could you possibly say which addresses were removed from having to deal with the code?
Uh, I can't, but I believe Joe Venge can.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Venge, can you answer that question?
Those are in Ward four, and so Joe and I are interested in those.
Ms. Doddwell, the two properties that were addressed to Idle Rock Farm Drive were not included in the recommendation for the application of the overlay district. And and then the third was addressed to Strecker Road, but not owned or formerly owned by the Callahan family.
It's the one at the curve?
Yes, it's right there. It's actually on the north side. And there's an existing dwelling on it. Thank you, Mr. Newberry or Ms. Ripito.
And so then conversely, the question, could you uh let the council know, since it's gonna be coming forward, which two were included within the code based on, or recommended to be included based on uh Planning and Zoning Commission's action?
Uh, the addresses were one sixty-two and two ten Strecker Road. And two ten Strecker Road was on the National Priority List of the United States Environmental Protection Agency, and D listed in the middle part of sometime around two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. Um, and then the other is where Grover Callahan lived, who was the individual that stored the illegal contaminants on his property.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, Joe, to go back to, you know, these these properties that the council has the have before them tonight. You know, for example, you talked about dumping in the creek and so forth. We, the the, I guess my question is, the city knows conclusively that that occurred. Is that correct? From that property?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that prompted initially the Missouri Department of Natural Resources to do an investigation. Once they discovered the extent of the storage and dumping, they brought the Environmental Protection Agency in. And in nineteen ninety-six, as you know, a major cleanup occurred there, which the, with the materials being taken to Time Speech and burned at the incinerator that was installed there for a temporary basis.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question on this, um, the public hearing items is a procedural one. Excuse me, and that is um, assuming that the council uh wants to include all or some of these properties within the scope of the code legislation, uh, you will be asking for the council, the the motion would be for the council to have legislation prepared to do that, because it will need to be a bill passed um by the by the council, signed by me. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir. Thank you.
Okay, uh, before we move to my next items on the agenda, is there, are there any questions about Councilmember Clark?
Yeah, uh, after our, after the planning and zoning meeting, and I went back and looked this over again, and um, I noticed that the interpolation of the data points that they had picked, it seems like there's large gaps. And they used a crigging method. And as I understand, it's not, that's not the method that would be used now, because it is a uh linear predictor.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead. We, in in the work session, just sort of for information stuff, any debate, if you're gonna if you're gonna debate in any way, we would need to do that. City Attorney just reminded me, in the main meeting. So I don't, if you were just gonna have something factual.
Oh, well, I had a question on that.
Okay.
Can you let me know where all of those testing points? Where that the test was taken from, so we can see where the gaps are?
I, Ms. Clark, I can certainly contact the representative from the Environmental Protection Agency that Mr. Cross and I have been um, working with over the course of these discussions about the properties, and I certainly will ask her if she could provide that information.
Okay, any other questions from any member of the council on the on the public hearing items? Okay, so next on the uh main meeting agenda, I had a, just a couple of other questions. Joe, on Bill twenty-six eighty-five, um, actually, this is on three bills, and uh the question for each one of these is, would you want the council to consider a second reading? During the meeting, the first one is the farmer's market, uh, Ms. McAvoy, and that that contract, Bill twenty-six eighty-five.
Yes, sir. The contract remains unchanged over the last couple of years. So if there is no objection by city council, I believe it would could be acted upon tonight and finally passed. Thank you.
Okay, so you would like a second reading on that one?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, so let me get this down here. Um, the next one is Bill, actually to Joe, Bill twenty-six eighty-three and twenty-six eighty-four. Um, one's in Ward uh six, one's in Ward three, but they both can relate to boundary adjustments and the like. So what about on either of those?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, for the question. Twenty-six eighty-four is ready for a second reading. The owner of property, along with the surveying company, did an excellent job of rounding up all the information. We're missing a couple items on twenty-six eighty-three. They're utility letters, so not anything that would impact the plat itself. But I would feel probably comfortable with twenty-six eighty-four being read for a second time tonight, but not necessarily twenty-six eighty-three. And again, thank you for asking.
Okay, you're welcome. And then relative to the postponements that was brought up by Councilmember Doddwell earlier, uh, just for everyone's information, uh, if you could let us know, one is Rick and one is Joe. Rick, on Bill twenty-six seventy-five, the first uh bill for second reading um, the postponement, can you please let us know what the reasoning is for the postponement request?
Um, yes, certainly, Mr. Mayor. The um, proposal, the postponement relative to the concrete street replacement project pertains to uh, the fact that uh fortunately, when we talked to Tom Kelp, he's indicated that um he's unable to move forward with the proposed agreement that is in front of the city council for second reading. Um, we have asked him to consider a counterproposal that might be acceptable to him. Um, we are still waiting for that. It is not in hand at this point, but the uh, the fact of the matter is that the the uh volatility in prices and the increases being seen in the in the industry have led him to uh state that he would not be able to 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 move forward with the contract as proposed with the four point four percent increase at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Rick on that one? Okay, just, I just wanted everyone in the public to know why we have the agenda showing postponement requests here. Um, Joe, same question on Bill twenty-six seventy-six, the postponement. Can you please let us know the rationale for that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Civil Design Incorporated received the sta- the Standard Professional Services Agreement. There appeared to be some kind of um, I guess, overlap in the transmittal of the pardon me, in the transmittal of the document. And they also would like to add a couple of items to the agreement, which needs Mr. Young's review. Thank you.
Okay, yes, it's good to have our city attorney review agreements like that. Okay. Um, so those were all my questions, um, and I hope that helps our meeting. Any um does any member of the council have any questions uh relative to items appearing on the main meeting agenda? Got a few minutes left here. If not, we'll take a break and okay, see nothing further. Um, we need a motion to adjourn the work session, and then um, we will start them, have about fifteen minutes here. And actually, that clocks a little around fourteen minutes. And then we'll uh start the main meeting. Motion to adjourn made by Councilmember Hopper, seconded by Councilmember Doddwell, non-debatable. All in favor of the motion to adjourn, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so we'll start the main meeting exactly at seven o'clock. Thank you. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
Mayor Boland.
Here.
Councilmember Galani.
Here.
Councilmember Hopper.
Here.
Councilmember Jaxi.
Here.
Councilmember Bertolino. Councilmember Dodwell.
Here.
Councilmember Ottenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Edens.
Here.
Councilmember Bros.
Here.
Councilmember Garitano. Councilmember Flasher.
Here.
Councilmember Rambo.
Here.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Nian.
Here.
Councilmember Bar Tony.
Here.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Okay, thank you and welcome everyone and everyone who's with us to see me in the audience. Appreciate you being here. Welcome. If you are comfortably able, if you would please stand with me for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes from. The council's February twenty eight, twenty twenty two work session and regular meeting. If there are any comments on the. Minutes, we can take those now. Otherwise, I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Made by Councilmember Ottenberg, seconded by Councilmember Brost. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve the minutes as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, minutes are approved. Moving next to public participation, just want to mention a few words about that. It is a valuable component of our meeting. Anyone who wishes to speak must indicate they would like to do that by. Completing a speaker card and handing it to the city clerk to your left or indicating with a raised hand feature on Zoom. When your name is called, please state your name and ward. To ensure that all who wish to speak have the opportunity to do so, there is a five minute time limitation and I will let you know when that is reached. If you have any questions for us, please mention that during your remarks and identify the official that you would like to respond. That official will make note of it and at the conclusion of public participation, any official who chooses to respond. Will have three minutes to do so as to all questions presented to that official. The official may also choose to respond to your questions after tonight's meeting and we may post those responses. On the city council page of our website. Finally, please be respectful to others in making your remarks. This means that interrupting others and using profane and abusive language are prohibited and I want to thank everyone in advance for following these. First speaker card, please.
Um, I actually don't have any speaker cards for the public participation portion of the meeting.
Um, do we have anyone on Zoom? Oh, I thought we did. I saw your cards down there. My apologies. All right. Anyone wish to speak that's here? All right, moving next to. Announcements and appointments. So the first mayor announcements is recognition of Mr. Gary Cruz. Gary, would you please come forward? So Gary is retiring. Unfortunately for us. Good for Gary, I guess. We hope so. And I just want to mention a few things about his tenure with St. Louis County and with the city of Wildwood. It's been. Very long and and it's been a wonderful one. So first of all. He actually was the first precinct captain for the city of Wildwood's Police Department. And he retired after thirty seven years with St. Louis County Police. And he has been our director, I'm sorry, superintendent of Parks and Recreation for twelve years. I could list all the many things, events and so forth that is are attributable to him. The many things that he has done. But frankly, they're too numerous to mention. So I thought on behalf of all of us, in lieu of mentioning each and every one of those, I would just say a great big thank you. For all the work that you've done, not only for the city, but for the county prior to that. We are going to miss you immensely. You're always welcome back. And we're going to give you a standing ovation here in a second, but before we do that, if you'd like to say anything, we'd be happy to hear it.
I think it's awfully funny that. Twelve years ago in two thousand and ten, I was in a similar position, standing in front of the council and. Pulling one of the hardest triggers I ever pulled in my life, leaving the police department. I will say this, that in. Very late nineteen ninety four and early nineteen ninety five, before the city was incorporated. I was a brand new lieutenant with the St. Louis County Police Department and my boss at the time, the captain. In the West County Precinct, he snagged me and said, hey, come with me to some of these meetings for me and. If you take some notes for me and. I said, sure, no problem. So I did the notes and I I ran some numbers back and forth to the city founders at that time. They were getting ready for the contract and so forth. I I'm not sure what I would have done had I known what my history was going to be in nineteen ninety five with the city of Wildwood. Having no clue that I would be here in two thousand and twenty two. I did think about if I had something to say tonight, that maybe I would offer Mr. Boonich and. And Mr. Cross. You know, some. Some tips on who to hire, who's going to replace me and. And then, like you said, I got thinking of all the things that I do and I thought, my gosh, I can't board a city council with all that. So. I'm I'm going to leave Mr. Cross and Mr. Boonich. When they do determine who the candidates are that that are going to replace me, they can reach up to the the shelf and pull down their. Their crystal ball. And look into it and just. Try to determine who's going to enjoy coming to work every day with the city, who's going to enjoy the people that they work with every day. And somehow pick a guy that's not going to get all emotional upset when he has to leave this wonderful organization. All I can say is thank you for my my part in the history of the city of Wildwood. I really appreciate it.
All right, thank you so much and best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving next to. Moving next to appointments, we have four. Ms. Karen Gelling from Ward three. To our as our representative, the representative from Ward three to the Wildwood Celebration Commission. Mr. Charlie Seibert from Ward eight, also the representative from Ward eight to the Wildwood Celebration Commission. Mr. Kevin Lux from Ward three to our Board of Adjustment. And Ms. Susan Seibert from Ward eight, who is term limited from the Wildwood Celebration Commission, but wants to stay involved to fill a vacancy on our Board of Ethics. If there are any questions about any of these appointments, I'd be happy to entertain those and I had a question if there are for you, if there are no questions about them. If the council would be interested in doing a motion of approval en masse for all four of them. Okay, Councilmember Nian.
I move that we accept all nominees.
Okay, so a motion to approve the appointments as presented, all four is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Hopper. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, congratulations to each one of them and welcome to the team. All right, next, public hearings, we have five items. And I'm going to ask our city clerk, first of all, to read. Each to read each one of those and then we're going to get to. Any comments from Mr. Vennett and public participation on those. So Ms. Eldridge, would you please read each of the. Five items, PZ ten dash twenty one, thirteen, PZ thirteen dash twenty one, PZ fourteen dash twenty one, PZ fifteen dash twenty one and PZ seventeen dash twenty one.
PZ ten dash twenty one, City of Wildwood Planning and Zoning Commission, care of Department of Planning, City Hall, one six eight six zero, Main Street, Wildwood, Missouri, six three zero four.
Wildwood, Missouri, six three zero four zero. A request of the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider the amendment and the change of the zoning district boundaries in classification of properties in the city by establishing the boundaries of the Special Circumstances Overlay District, SCOD, Chapter four one five point five zero five, Special Circumstances Overlay District, SCOD, of the zoning ordinance, and including within such district boundaries, certain property generally located on the north side of Stricker Road, east of Engelbrook Drive, consisting of approximately eleven point five seven acres, and with a street address of one four nine Stricker Road, St. Louis County locator number two two U three three zero zero five one, which is currently zoned in U non-urban residence district, Planning and Zoning Commission action recommended for inclusion within the Special Circumstances Overlay District, SCOD. PZ thirteen dash twenty-one, City of Wildwood Planning and Zoning Commission, care of Department of Planning, City Hall, one six eight six zero, Main Street, Wildwood, Missouri, six three zero four zero. A request of the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider the amendment and the change of the zoning district boundaries and classification of properties in the city by establishing the boundaries of the Special Circumstances Overlay District, SCOD, Chapter four one five point five zero five, Special Circumstances Overlay District, SCOD, of the zoning ordinance, and including within such district boundaries, certain property generally located on the north side of Stricker Road, east of Engelbrook Drive, consisting of approximately five point one seven acres, and with a street address of one six five Stricker Road, St. Louis County locator number two two U three three zero zero three one, which is currently zoned in U non-urban residence district, Planning and Zoning Commission action recommended for inclusion within the Special Circumstances Overlay District, SCOD. PZ fourteen dash twenty-one, City of Wildwood Planning and Zoning Commission, care of Department of Planning, City Hall, one six eight six zero, Main Street, Wildwood, Missouri, six three oh four oh. A request of the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider the amendment and the change of the zoning district boundaries and classification of properties in the city by establishing the boundaries of the Special Circumstances Overlay District, SCOD, Chapter four one five point five zero five, Special Circumstances Overlay District, SCOD, of the zoning ordinance, and including within such district boundaries, certain property generally located on the north side of Stricker Road, east of Engelbrook Drive, consisting of approximately ten point one six acres, and with a street address of one seven three Stricker Road, St. Louis County locator number two two U three three zero zero six two, which is currently zoned in U non-urban residence district, Planning and Zoning Commission action recommended for inclusion within the Special Circumstances Overlay District, SCOD. PZ fifteen dash twenty-one, City of Wildwood Planning and Zoning Commission, care of Department of Planning, City Hall, one six eight six zero, Main Street, Wildwood, Missouri, six three zero four zero, a request of the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider the amendment and the change of the zoning district boundaries and classification of properties in the city by establishing the boundaries of the Special Circumstances Overlay District, SCOD, Chapter four one five point five zero five, Special Circumstances Overlay District, SCOD, of the zoning ordinance, and including within such district boundaries, certain property generally located on the north side of Stricker Road, east of Engelbrook Drive, consisting of approximately three point zero acres, and with a street address of one seven seven, one seven seven Stricker Road, St. Louis County locator number two two U two four zero zero two four, which is currently zoned in U non-urban residence district, Planning and Zoning Commission action recommended for inclusion within the Special Circumstances Overlay District, SCOD. PZ seventeen dash twenty-one, City of Wildwood Planning and Zoning Commission, care of Department of Planning, City Hall, one six eight six zero, Main Street, Wildwood, Missouri, six three zero four zero. A request of the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider the amendment and the change of the zoning district boundaries and classification of properties in the city by establishing the boundaries of the Special Circumstances Overlay District, SCOD, Chapter four one five point five zero five, Special Circumstances Overlay District, SCOD, of the zoning ordinance, and including with such district boundaries, certain property generally located on the north side of Stricker Road, consisting of approximately four point two nine acres, and with a street address of three four zero, Turnberry Place Drive, St. Louis County locator number two two U six one zero six four one, which is currently zoned R two fifteen thousand square foot residence district with a planned environment unit, PEU. Planning and Zoning Commission action recommended for inclusion in the Special Circumstances Overlay District, SCOD.
Thank you for reading all of those. Mr. Vennett, before we get to public participation as part of the hearing on these properties, do you have anything you want to say for the benefit of the council or the public?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, very briefly. Mr. Mayor and members of City Council, as you may recall, in June of two thousand and twenty-one, ten properties in this general vicinity were advertised by the Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration of the application of the overlay district. Ultimately, those ten properties were divided into two groups of five properties each. This first group of property contains two of the bluest properties that remain on the National Priorities List. The other three properties identified as one six five, one seven three, and one seven seven Stricker Road all collectively formed the Stricker Forest Site. The Stricker Forest Site has a white paper that was prepared by the city indicating certain shortcomings relative to the testing standards and actions taken by the Missouri Department of Natural Resources and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the data information provided to it, and is recommending these free these five properties be subject to the overlay district as set forth in their letter of recommendation. After public participation, the Department of Planning, along with the city attorney John Young, will be available for any comments or questions. Thank you.
Thank you. So I understand we have a couple of speakers on this, so everyone that wants to speak presumably heard the few things I mentioned earlier. So first speaker card, please.
The first speaker card is Scott Morquart wishing to comment on the SCOD public hearing.
Good evening. My name is Scott Marquardt, and I am here to speak about our, and I am I own two properties in Ward Four, very near the properties that are subject to tonight's public hearing. This evening, I would like to thank Mayor Boland for something he said last week at the Planning and Zoning Meeting. To quote Mayor Boland, "I would recommend bifurcating these properties into two categories. The first category is those that we know have known evidence of environmental contamination previously. I am not going to get into whether it is there or not now, and those properties that we have no evidence. There are three of them that we suspicion based on being adjacent or whatever, that may be needing additional overlay district protection, but we don't have solid evidence to say that as of this moment in time, that that is in fact the case. Now, if that comes about in the future, my opinion would change," end quote. Mayor Boland continued, "The properties are not within the SCOD because we have no evidence to support that at this point, relative to the properties that have known prior contamination, that they be subject to the SCOD," end quote. The properties at one seven seven and one six five Stricker Road have no history of known contamination, and therefore, in Mayor Boland's own words, "These properties are not within the SCOD because we have no evidence to support that at this point." Thank you for allowing me to share this evening.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
The next speaker card is from Dwayne Morquart wishing to comment on the SCOD public hearing.
I excuse me, Dwayne Morquart, eight three four Holly Ridge, six three oh one one. I'm here to talk regarding the SCOD. We gave Megan an applause for reading that, and unfortunately, that took longer than the discussion that the commission had on individual properties regarding the SCOD. So I submit to you that the properties should be evaluated and should be judged individually, but they were not. They were put together in a mass group, and they were voted for in that fashion. Based on January nineteen twenty twenty-one, Planning and Zoning Commission, there were key reasons identified by the Planning and Zoning Commission to include the following items. Two of the items were not all properties are created equal in terms of their characteristics, and then some properties can be used once all factors about them, their past use and characteristics are identified through open, public, and transparent processes. Unfortunately, Megan's reading of this took longer than the discussion that the commission had. They were not provided with the information from the department, from the mayor, and several other sources that talked about each of these individual properties. And so I respectfully recommend that this matter be referred back to the Planning and Zoning Commission to follow that process, that each property be evaluated individually, and then send it back to you so that they can give you recommendations on each property. And you heard discussion that some of these have never been identified to have anything wrong with them. So thank you for your time and consideration. I just want to let you be aware of that's what the process had occurred. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
I don't have any more speaker cards.
Travis, anyone with a raised hand on Zoom? Okay, so that concludes the public hearing. Joe, relative to the question that I asked in the work session, I'm going to ask it again, just because we're now in the main meeting, and we did have at least one of our participants come to speak to this tonight. And my question to you earlier, which I believe you answered in the affirmative, was that relative to the five properties that are being presented to the council this evening, potentially for the drafting of legislation to bring them within the scope of the SCODE rules, that your, when I ask you this question, you answered yes, and the question was that there is, whether there was known evidence of prior or current contamination relative to each of the five. And so I'm going to ask that question again, since we are in the public, since we're in the main meeting, and now the council beginning ready to decide what it wants to do with this. So would you please answer that question again?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Of the five properties, three remain on the National Priorities List of the United States Environmental Protection Agency. The two properties referenced by one of the speaker is part of Stricker Forest Site. A white paper was completed by the city indicating that a number of shortcomings were identified that need to be addressed before any development can be considered. Using the white paper for the Stricker Forest Site, it is clear that there are concerns and that the Planning and Zoning Commission felt safe in addressing those concerns. Again, the overlay district does not preclude development. It just asks for better information sooner in the process and throughout the process until its conclusion. Thank you.
So the short answer is yes, correct?
Yes, sir. That's my belief based upon the Environmental Protection Agency and the city's white paper. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So my next question to you is a procedural one. If the council wants to proceed with the recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission, then the course of action at this point would be for the council to make a motion to have legislation prepared to bring within the scope of the SCODE whatever properties the council decides it wants to have within that scope. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Pardon my interruption. Yes, sir.
Correct. Okay, any questions for Mr. Vennett or a motion? Councilmember Bartoni?
So if we don't make a motion tonight, does this, what happens?
City Attorney Young?
The matter effectively dies. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. There is the possibility of making a motion and then postponing it for further consideration, but if there's no motion at all tonight, I just want to raise that as an alternative.
Thank you for the clarification.
Councilmember Clark?
Well, I wouldn't want it to die. I would, I'll make the motion on move that we go ahead with the properties as as outlined by the department to put to add to the SCODE or to to prepare legislation for. I see that there's there's gaps in the data, and I wouldn't feel comfortable with leaving any of them off based on what all of the reports that I have read and the type of interpolation that they used. So, yeah, I would say that we need to add, include all of them.
So a motion to proceed to have legislation prepared to include all five properties within the scope of the SCODE. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Edens. So are you discussion on the motion? Councilwoman Edens?
Yes, I just want to say that these are the Ward Two properties. Both Dawn and myself represent Ward Two. I understand your concerns. However, your properties are in Ward Four. That's a discussion for another night. So I would encourage support on this particular cluster of properties as a group. Thank you.
All right, see no further discussion. All in favor of the motion to have the legislation prepared, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstained.
We have one abstention, Councilmember Bartoni. So we will have the legislation prepared for the next council meeting, I believe. Is that correct, Mr. Vennett?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and thanks to everyone who came to speak on this this evening. Moving next into our legislation, we're going to start with second readings. Bill twenty-six seventy-five is before the council for second reading. There's been a request to have it postponed. Do we need to have it read before it's postponed? Okay. If anyone would like to make a motion to have it read, we can do that. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to have to postpone this to the next meeting of the council. Made by Councilmember Farmer to postpone, seconded by Councilmember McCutcheon. Any discussion on the motion to postpone? Seeing no discussion, all in favor of the motion to postpone, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion to postpone is passed. Similarly, relative to Bill twenty-six seventy-six, there's also been a request from our director of planning to postpone this one for different reasons. If you want to have it read, you can make a motion to that effect. Otherwise, I would ask for a motion to postpone. Made by Councilmember Farmer, seconded by Councilmember McCutcheon. Any discussion on the motion to postpone Bill twenty-six seventy-six to the next council meeting? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to postpone Bill twenty-six seventy-six, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the bill is postponed. That takes us to Bill twenty-five, twenty-six seventy-seven, sorry. It's before the council for final passage, and it concerns Ward Eight. Is there a motion for the second reading of the bill made by Councilmember Galani, seconded by Councilmember Hopper? All in favor of the motion for second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Eldridge, please read Bill twenty-six seventy-seven.
Bill twenty-six seventy-seven, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute all necessary and required documents relating to professional services agreement with SWT Design for the development of a master plan and design for Route sixty-six roadside park, second reading.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vennett, do you have anything further you want to mention to the council in addition to the information that has been provided?
No, sir, but as always, the department's available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions for Joe or any comments on Bill twenty-six seventy-seven? Seeing none, Ms. Eldridge, please call the roll for final passage of Bill twenty-six seventy-seven.
Councilmember Galani.
Yes.
Councilmember Hopper.
Yes.
Councilmember Jaxi.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Yes.
Councilmember Ottenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Edens.
Yes.
Councilmember Bros.
Yes.
Councilmember Flasher.
Yes.
Councilmember Rambo.
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer.
Yes.
Councilmember Nian.
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Okay, the bill has passed and is now in effect. Moving next to Bill twenty-six seventy-eight, it is before the council for final passage. It also concerns Ward Eight. Is there a motion for the second reading of the bill made by Councilmember Galani? Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Jaxi. All in favor of the motion for second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Eldridge, please read Bill twenty-six seventy-eight.
Bill twenty-six seventy-eight, an ordinance of the City of Wildwood, Missouri that hereby endorses, ratifies, and authorizes a change to the Town Center Regulating Plan, the rezoning of property, and the application of a planned residential development overlay district, PRD, onto a set of properties totaling two point five acres that are located on the north and south sides of New College Avenue, west of West Avenue, and east of State Route one oh nine, thereby allowing up to eighteen attached row houses on individual lots with common ground and required public spaces areas, all being consistent with the Planning and Zoning Commission's action upon its letter of recommendation, being dated January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, second reading.
Thank you. Mr. Vennett, anything further you would like to mention relative to this bill?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor, but if there are any questions, the department would be glad to try to answer them at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Any questions for Mr. Vennett from any member of the council or any comments on the bill? Seeing none, Ms. Eldridge, please call the roll for final passage of Bill twenty-six seventy-eight.
Councilmember Hopper.
Yes.
Councilmember Jaxi.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Yes.
Councilmember Ottenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Edens.
Yes.
Councilmember Bros.
Yes.
Councilmember Flasher.
Yes.
Councilmember Rambo.
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer.
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Nian. Councilmember Bartoni.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Galani.
All right, thank you. The bill has passed. Moving next to Bill twenty-six eighty-one, it is also for final passage at the last of our second readings and it concerns all wards. Is there a motion for the second reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember McCutcheon, seconded by Councilmember Doddwell. All in favor of the motion for second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Eldridge, please read Bill twenty-six eighty-one.
Bill twenty-six eighty-one, an ordinance of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a cost-share agreement with the Missouri Department of Conservation under the Tree Resource Improvement and Maintenance TRIM Grant Program for state funding to complete a citywide inventory of street trees, second reading.
Okay, thank you. Rick Brown, do you have anything you want to mention relative to Bill twenty-six eighty-one?
Thank you, Mayor Boland. No, I have nothing additional, but available for any questions from the city council.
Any questions for Rick or any comments? All right, seeing none, Ms. Eldridge, please call the roll for final passage of Bill twenty-six eighty-one.
Councilmember Jaxi.
Yes.
Councilmember Doddwell.
Yes.
Councilmember Ottenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Edens.
Yes.
Councilmember Bros.
Yes.
Councilmember Flasher.
Yes.
Councilmember Rambo.
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer.
Yes.
Councilmember Nian. Councilmember Bartoni.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Galani.
Yes.
Councilmember Hopper.
Yes.
Okay, the bill has passed. So counselors, the next two bills concern similar items. Bill twenty-six eighty-three relates to a minor subdivision platte and then Bill twenty-six eighty-four relates to a boundary adjustment. The first is in Ward six, the second is in Ward three. Would there be any objection to handling these collectively? Councilmember Bartoni?
If, if I remember right, I mean, I don't know if we can read them first time collectively, but with the first one, they were still waiting on some information before a second reading?
This is a first reading, so they can go through first reading and then on the second bill, which is twenty-six eighty-four, Mr. Vennett indicated in the work session, that one could have a second reading, but right now we're only dealing with the first reading and both of them are up for that.
Thank you for a clarify.
You're welcome. So would there be any objection to handling these collectively? All right, seeing none, Ms. Eldridge, please read Bills twenty-six eighty-three and twenty-six. I'm sorry, we need a motion. Is there a motion for the first reading of Bills twenty-six eighty-three and twenty-six eighty-four made by Councilmember Bros, seconded by Councilmember Jaxi? All in favor of the motion for first reading of the two bills, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Eldridge, please read Bills twenty-six eighty-three and twenty-six eighty-four for the first time.
Bill twenty-six eighty-three, an ordinance of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing a minor subdivision platte of a twenty-nine and eight tenths acre parcel of ground that is located in the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section thirty, Township forty-four North, range three east of the fifth principal meridian and more specifically situated at the terminus of Chateau Lane and hereafter to be known as the Chateau Forest subdivision, first reading. Bill twenty-six eighty-four, an ordinance of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing a boundary adjustment platte between two lots that are identified as a survey located in the southeast quarter of the northwest quarter and the southwest quarter of the northeast quarter of Section twenty-five Township forty-four North, range three east, being more specifically located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Shepherd Road and Sullen Reclaim to be hereafter known as the one-eight-one-zero-nine Sullen Reclaim and one-six-one-one Shepherd Road Boundary Adjustment Plat, first reading.
Thank you. Joe, is there anything you'd like to mention relative to either of these bills?
Mr. Mayor, I do not have any additional items to add to the bill's description. So if there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer them at this time. Thank you.
Did you want to show any drawings or, or anything of the two parcels for information?
Yes, if we, if you don't mind, we have both aerial photography as well as the plats themselves.
Why don't we do that?
Thank you, sir. The first aerial photograph is the, the Sullen Rink Lane Adjustment and as you can see, it is butts Shepherd Road at the intersection of the private street, Sullen Rick Lane. And the intent of the platte, which is the next slide is, I'm sorry, that's Chateau Forest, my apologies. This is Chateau Forest and again, Chateau Lane is a private street and this is near this terminus and the intent is to create three lots, all of which are greater than eight acres in size. The next aerial photograph should be of Sullen Rink Lane and Shepherd Road. There it is. And again, as you can see, it's near the Emmeran, Missouri Transmission Eastman on Shepherd Road. And the next slide represents the actual platte. And as you can see, the intent is to adjust the lot so as the encroachments from one lot will be not encroaching on the other lot. And so again, this survey company did an excellent job of providing all the information necessary to expedite this particular request. Again, if there are any questions, the department would be glad to answer them at this time.
Any questions for Joe or any comments? All right, so Bill twenty-six eighty-three will be on the council's agenda for the next meeting and as you may recall from the work session and I just mentioned a few minutes ago and responds to Councilor Bartoni's question. Mr. Vennett had indicated that he would request a second reading for Bill twenty-six eighty-four. That bill concerns Ward three. Is there a motion for a second reading of Bill twenty-six eighty-four made by Councilman Nian, seconded by Councilmember Ottenberg? This will take a two-thirds vote, given that we would be doing a second reading at the same meeting as the first reading. So a super majority vote, we'll try by voice vote and see where that goes and make a decision as whether we need to do something else as far as counting. All in favor of the motion for second reading this evening, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So the two-thirds super majority has been satisfied. Ms. Eldridge, please read Bill twenty-six eighty-four a second time.
Bill twenty-six eighty-four, an ordinance of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing a boundary adjustment platte between two lots that are identified as a survey located in the southeast quarter of the northwest quarter and the southwest quarter of the northeast quarter of Section twenty-five Township forty-four North, range three east, being more specifically located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Shepherd Road and Sullen Reclaim to be hereafter known as the one-eight-one-zero-nine Sullen Reclaim and one-six-one-one Shepherd Road Boundary Adjustment Plat, second reading.
Thank you. And so I think we've already heard from Mr. Vennett relative to this and I'm assuming he has nothing to add two minutes later. So, um, any questions from any member of the council? Otherwise, we'll call the roll for final passage of Bill twenty-six eighty-four. Seeing nothing from the council, Ms. Eldridge, please call the roll for final passage of Bill twenty-six eighty-four.
Councilmember Doddwell.
Yes.
Councilmember Ottenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Edens.
Yes.
Councilmember Bros.
Yes.
Councilmember Flasher.
Yes.
Councilmember Rambo.
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer.
Yes.
Councilmember Nian.
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Galani.
Yes.
Councilmember Hopper.
Yes.
Councilmember Jaxi.
Yes. The bill has passed. Moving next to Bill twenty-six eighty-five, it's before the council for first reading. It concerns all wards. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Edens, seconded by Councilmember Hopper. All in favor of the motion for first reading of Bill twenty-six eighty-five, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Eldridge, please read Bill twenty-six eighty-five a first time.
Bill twenty-six eighty-five, an ordinance of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Natalie McAvoy for the management and oversight of the city-sponsored farmers market of which said individuals shall act as its manager in all aspects of the scheduling, operation, and record keeping associated with the same first reading.
Thank you. Mr. Vennett, anything that you want to mention relative to Bill twenty-six eighty-five?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, there was unanimous vote at the Planning and Parks Committee to extend the contract with Miss Backavoy, given her success. And again, as was discussed at work session, the bill and attached agreement or could be read for a second time tonight with the support of city council. If there are any questions, the department would be glad to try to answer them at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Joe? Councilmember Bartoni?
Uh, I'll make a motion that we have a second reading and move forward with the, she has done a wonderful job with the farmers market compared to where it was when she took over.
Seconded by Councilmember Doddwell, we have a motion and a second for a second reading and as I just mentioned moments ago, this does require a super majority, two-thirds vote. We'll try a voice vote first, see where that goes. All in favor of motion, of the motion for a second reading of Bill twenty-six eighty-five, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We have a super majority met. Ms. Eldridge, please read Bill twenty-six eighty-five a second time.
Bill twenty-six eighty-five, an ordinance of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Natalie McAvoy for the management and oversight of the city-sponsored farmers market of which said individuals shall act as its manager in all aspects of the scheduling, operation, and record keeping associated with the same second reading.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any further questions or comments? Seeing none, Ms. Eldridge, please call the roll for final passage of Bill twenty-six eighty-five.
Councilmember Ottenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Edens.
Yeah.
Councilmember Bros.
Yes.
Councilmember Flasher.
Yes.
Councilmember Rambo.
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer.
Yes.
Councilmember Nian.
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Galani.
Yes.
Councilmember Hopper.
Yes.
Councilmember Jaxi.
Yes.
Councilmember Doddwell.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The bill has passed. Moving next to Bill twenty-six eighty-six, it's before the council for first reading. It concerns three wards, one, five, and eight. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill made by Councilmember McCutcheon? Seconded by Councilmember Bros, all in favor of the motion for first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? I'm sorry, any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, Ms. Eldridge, please read Bill twenty-six eighty-six.
Bill twenty-six eighty-six, an ordinance of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a contract on behalf of the city with Go Green Lawn and Landscape LLC for the maintenance of certain native landscaping areas within the city, first reading.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Brown, do you have anything you want to mention relative to this item?
Um, thank you, Mayor Boland. Uh, no, I have nothing additional, but again, available for any questions from the city council.
Okay, are there any questions for Rick from any member of the council? Seeing none, um, this will be on the council's agenda for its next meeting. Finally, moving to Bill twenty-six eighty-seven, it's also before the council for first reading, the last of them this evening and it concerns wards five and six. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Wards five and six, made by Councilmember Rambo, seconded by Councilmember McCutcheon. All in favor of the motion for first reading of Bill twenty-six eighty-seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Eldridge, please read Bill twenty-six eighty-seven for the first time.
Bill twenty-six eighty-seven, an ordinance of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a contract on behalf of the city with NB West Contracting Company for the resurfacing of various public streets within the city, including traffic control and other incidental items as shown on the construction drawings and specifications, first reading.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Brown, anything you'd like to mention relative to Bill twenty-six eighty-seven?
Um, thank you, Mayor Boland. I have nothing additional to add, but again, available for any questions from the city council.
All right. Any questions for Rick or any comments on the bill? All right, seeing none, it'll be on the council's agenda for its next meeting. We have no resolutions. We have one item on the consent agenda, approval of expenditures. Is there, are there any comments on the expenditures? If not, I would ask for a motion to... Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. This actually is a motion, uh, given that the, we would be meeting in April for me to approve the expenditures and as you know, my, my course of action with respect to that is to have those provided to the council before I do that for any comments or questions. So this would be not to approve the expenditures, but for me to do that between now and the next meeting. Any questions on that? If not, I would ask for a motion to that effect, made by Councilmember Farmer, seconded by Councilmember Ottenberg. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please say, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, motion carries. Uh, nothing under miscellaneous unless anyone has something, uh, someone has something, Councilmember Doddwell.
Um, I would just like to say thank you to the staff for adding the, um, the detail of each of the ordinances and the bills, et cetera, to the final reading of the bill so that we have an easy historical reference to go back to. Our residents can go back to when we approved something or when we didn't approve something and see all of that information in one spot. So, um, thank you all for, um, moving forward with doing that.
Well, as I recall, I think that was your suggestion and thank you for making that suggestion. Yep.
I thought the least I could do was say thank you and tell them.
Absolutely. Now, uh, more information for our residents is, is always a good thing. So, uh, okay, anything else under miscellaneous? Councilor Edens?
See you all at the Lawn and Garden Summit Saturday. Shameless plug, okay.
All right, thank you for raising that. And you want to give the times and locations for anyone that might be interested in taking you up on that invitation?
Certainly, one to five-thirty. If you go to our website or use the QR code on the flyer, you will find a schedule for lectures. You can peruse our farmer's market booth. Special thank you to our farmer's market manager for helping staff set up the booths and Mr. Cruz, although he's retiring, he's going out with a great event. There's over thirty booths that you can visit, lots of state agencies, you can get your soil tested, but you'll need to plan ahead with your sample. So visit the website for more and fingers crossed for no rain.
Thank you for that. Anything further under miscellaneous? I just want to thank each one of you for a great meeting and for all you do. So with that, uh, motion to adjourn, please, made by Councilmember Flasher, uh, seconded by Councilmember Hopper, it's non-debatable. All in favor of the motion to adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?